Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Mario Lara, Director of Youth Parks and Community in Richmond. The item before you this evening is whether to pass a motion approving the placement of a Black Lives Matter sign at McClatchy Park by accepting the sign as the City of Sacramento's government speech and authorizing a temporary license agreement for its installation. As you're aware, the statement "Black Lives Matters" refers to a national movement seeking social justice for black individuals and communities. In the summer of 2020, a resident, Zach Trobridge, donated a Black Lives Matter sign to a group who erected the sign at Curtis Park. Some members of the public placed candles and other items below the sign and attached messages to it. However, the sign was vandalized and the resident who created it took the sign down and replaced it and is now requesting that the sign be placed at McClatchy Park. A letter of support from Oak Park Neighborhood Association was attached to the request and is also attached to the council report, as well, a letter of support from Black Lives Matter Sacramento was received and is attached to the item. Given that the nature of the sign is to express an opinion, to allow the city to control what signs can be placed on public property, the city council would need to approve the sign as the statement of the city as government speech. If the city council approves this item, a license agreement will be executed to establish the term of the sign placement. The recommendation is that the temporary sign placement be for a period of six months with options to extend and that the sign would be installed in accordance with all permit and engineering requirements at the corner of Fifth Avenue and 34th Street at McClatchy Park and that it would be maintained in a safe condition. The Parks and Community Enrichment Commission voted unanimously to support the council's approval of the Black Lives Matter sign as the city's opinion statement and placing this in McClatchy Park for a temporary period. This concludes my brief background presentation, Mayor, and I turn the discussion back over to you and the Vice Mayor.
Thank you very, very much. Councilmember Chenier, of course, it's your district that led on this issue. Why don't you make some comments if you want now, or we can take the public testimony either way?
What I'd like to do, Mayor, is turn it over to Zach, who has constructed the sign, and then ask two of our community members, Tanya Faison, who's here from Black Lives Matter, and Grace Phillips, who's here from the President of the Oak Park Neighborhood Association. I know we have one caller, I believe, also, and then I'd like to make a couple of comments at that point.
Of course. Okay. Please welcome to--
Thank you. Yeah, I'll keep this brief and start us off here. I want to keep this as fast as possible, reserve as much time for Gracie and Tanya as possible, but quick intro is just that I'm-- my name's Zach Trobridge. I'm a resident of District Two and I created the Black Lives Matter sign that's up for discussion today. I created this monument to black lives lost to police violence back in late May of 2020, and I call it "Projects Say Their Names." I want to be really clear, because there were some misconceptions, especially in the last meeting that we had, that I was not paid by the city to create this. This piece was not commissioned by the City of Sacramento or any other state or local organization. I've not received any financial support at all for this project from anyone. I simply created this myself, and many outspoken members of the black community have asked me to put it somewhere permanent in historically black communities, so that's why, that's how we settled on McClatchy Park. So if you haven't seen it, it's a large wooden sign that says "Black Lives Matter," laid out end to end. It would be about 24 feet long, and it contains, written on it, the names of 347 black people who were killed by police while they were unarmed. Unfortunately, this number has grown since I created this piece, and I'll have to be adding some more names to reflect recent and historical events that, you know, have come to light. So the final structure that we're asking to install at McClatchy will be about 16 feet wide and just under six feet tall. I made this piece just after the George Floyd murder in an effort to use the hobbies that white privilege has afforded me to try to create something meaningful for the black community. I've done my best to take a backseat to the sign so that I, as a white man, am not getting in the way of black voices being heard. And I hope it's understood here tonight that I'm simply just a caretaker of the project, not the owner. I really believe that the project, that the sign belongs to all the names on it and the community itself. So just a few thank yous, obviously, to the black community that's been so supportive of this project and making it happen. Thank you to Gracie of the Oak Park Neighborhood Association for the letter of recommendation and helping to sort of orchestrate that conversation in Oak Park. Thank you to Tanya for your support as part of Sacramento Black Lives Matter. Thank you to Black Zebra Media for your channel of communication and help with direction and ideas on this piece. Thank you so much to Mario for connecting the dots and making this happen. Thank you to Jay Chenier for your incredible support for this project and all the different news media outlets that have supported it. So I'm excited to pass this over to Gracie and Tanya. I'm not sure who wants to go first to highlight the voices that really needed to be heard in this conversation.
Thanks, Zach. Tanya, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Thank you. So my name's Tanya Faison. I'm with Black Lives Matter Sacramento. I moved to Oak Park in 1985, January 1985, when I was 10 years old. I lived there throughout the fifth and sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, and throughout high school. So I have really, really strong ties to Oak Park. I support this wholeheartedly, that this should go in this neighborhood, and it should go in McClatchy Park. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Okay. So I support this wholeheartedly. I'm going to give you some reasons as to why. First, I'm going to start off with some historical reasons as to why it appears through actions that black lives do not matter in this area. Throughout history, we've had white flight when black folks move into the neighborhood. We've had redlining that's been done by federal government and then later on done by city government under the guise of trying to fix this, bring a solution to the problem of the redlining. We've had the Black Counterparty, who's historically started in Oak Park, the Sacramento chapter of the Black Counterparty, historically started in Oak Park, had a house in Oak Park that got shot up. All of the resources that were provided to the community through this house were destroyed. And then you have, more recently, you've got the gentrification. You have, through gentrification, the removal of a lot of businesses that have been there forever, like Broadway Soul Food Takeout, who had two weeks to come up with more money to stay where they were at because their block got purchased, and so as a result, they had to leave. You've got Oak Park, North Oak Park and Central Oak Park is the only place in Sacramento that is policed so heavily. We've got CHP located in that vicinity that goes through. We've got Sacramento Sheriff that strolls through. We've got SAC PD. We have the University of Pacific Police Department. We have UC Davis Police Department that often ventures away from UC Davis Hospital to, you know, pull people over on Stockton Boulevard. And then you have what used to be called Palladium Security, who was contracted with the city and the county, and now they're called Allied. They do a lot of policing in that neighborhood as well. So this is the only, the only neighborhood in Sacramento that has so much law enforcement presence. And most of that presence impacts black folks and brown folks that live in that area or that are unhoused in that area due to the gentrification that's happened in that area. And then on top of that, you have intra-community violence, and we saw a lot of that this summer. And so those are all the reasons as to why I feel like it is so important to put a sign up in this park, not only as a gesture of, you know, goodwill toward the people and as a reminder to everybody in the community that black folks, your lives do matter, and then a reminder to non-black folks that black lives, every single black life matters in this community, but also as a commitment from the city and the agencies within the City of Sacramento to not repeat history and to not, you know, there are certain agencies that continue to oppress black folks in this community, to remind them to not continue to oppress black folks in this community. And then to do more than, you know, performative gestures. We need, we need real substance to follow this, and this should be a commitment on behalf of the City of Sacramento to guarantee that they're going to put in real efforts going forward. Lastly, I do want to also stress the fact that part of the request is that, you know, this is supposed to go up for a year, and we really need some type of Black Lives Matter-themed art or structure put up that's permanent and that's interactive with community so that it's not a temporary gesture of performance. We just need more, we need more resolutions, and this is a step in that direction. But I really want it to lead toward more actual resolutions, more actual substance by the City of Sacramento. But I do support it going up, and I really appreciate the fact that we are able to put this on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Tanya. Gracie?
Thank you. Hi, I'm L. Gracie Phillips, the current president of the Oak Park Neighborhood Association. And we, on January 14th, we voted, the Oak Park Neighborhood Association Board voted to strongly encourage the approval of Mr. Trobridge's Black Lives Matter sign at McClatchy Park. It was based on some input that we had from neighbors on our Facebook group page, who on a basic vote came for, what, 140 to zero? And, you know, 38 other comments, people saying, "We really want this at our park." It's, it is important because it is our park. It is important because black lives do matter. It's important because there is still a systemic problem. You know, there are things that we would like to see in Oak Park specifically that will help to curb some of the law enforcement violence that we've had to deal with. Basically, you know, the sign is a great gesture, and, you know, to paraphrase, it's not the answer, and we need to remember that, you know, the sign, although temporary, should not be torn down and thrown away when its tour is done. It needs to go on a worldwide tour. It needs to go to other neighborhoods, other areas in Sacramento, to not only spread the message that black lives matter, but also, you know, to, to, to share with those who have the privilege to not necessarily have to tap into the Black Lives Matter movement. Some of the things that we do look for is, you know, an increase in non-police violence, sorry, an increase in non-police responses for mental health crises and investments in emergency dispatch system. I know that's a big one, but it would be cool. And also investment in some of our existing community-based programs. We have a lot of programs that are operating in our area that could use support. So it's not just the fact that we have a sign that says "Black Lives Matter." It is the action, and the city, you know, we need to put our foot in it, and we need to do a lot more than, you know. And performative is the word that has come up numerous times, and I, I believe you can do a lot through, through certain performances, but there has to be action as well. So, you know, Oak Park is, the Neighborhood Association is absolutely jazzed to have this sign up, but we know that there are bigger problems, so we have to recognize that this is not the answer. This is just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Gracie. Mayor, I know there's two public callers, if you want to do those, and then other members of the council, and then I'd like to finish it up.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have three callers. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Jenny, and I am from Sacramento, and I'm just calling to support this project. I really want to echo what some of the speaker said, that though this is a great first step, I hope that it's not the final step. And I just want to remind everybody that, that, you know, that there's so much work to be done on this front, and I hope that nobody sees this as like, okay, we're done now. We put up a sign that there's further action within the city to, to make this, you know, a first step into other things. And also to remind everybody that a choice not to put it up at this point is really a choice to say that, that in fact, black lives don't matter in the City of Sacramento. So it's, it's literally and figuratively fantastic first step to reminding everyone that black lives do matter, that every single black life matters. Black art matters, black souls, songs, everything, they matter. And I just want to really encourage a yes vote on this, but also for further work to come after the sign, that it's just a first step. Thank you so much. Thank you to Mr. Trobridge. Thank you to Tanya and Gracie. I appreciate you and the work that you've put into this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, council. My name is Chevys Mays, and I live in Citrus Heights, California. And I would just like to say, I think it would be very appropriate for the Black Lives Matter sign to go into McClatchy Park. I feel like it will bring a historical moment, and it shows that Sacramento is standing in solidarity with Black Lives Matter and equality and justice for all people. And so I really hope that this will pass, and it will be a monumental moment for Sacramento. And my name is Chevys Mays, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Councilmember Chenier?
Do you want to have the other council members who want to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted to go next. I know--
No, I'll go last.
Let's go around here. Councilmember Rick Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I read the whole report on this, and I've read the history that has happened since the sign was erected. And I want to thank Zach for his work in providing this masterpiece to us. And also want to thank Tanya and Gracie for their comments. When you listen to them, they really have given all the reasons as to why this is something that we should be unanimous in approving. And I don't know that I can say any more than what they've said, because they've said it all. I think when you have a neighborhood association that votes unanimously for something like this, and then you have the Parks and Rec Commission that has voted unanimously for this, and you have the council member's support in making this happen, and I think about the schools that we talked about earlier, Oak Ridge Elementary School and Father Keith B. Kenny Elementary School, and all the other schools that are right around there that are maybe not directly in Oak Park, but that could also benefit from this. And when I think about the opportunity for this to become something that every student in the school can take a field trip to and write a report on and talk about why black, why black lives matter and why, and how this can be an educational piece to help all of our kids to build pride in themselves and their families to build pride in themselves. When I think about all the possibilities, all the great possibilities of this, and I think about the history of Oak Park, my first mo, my, my first notion is to put, just to, to put a motion up, but I want to save that for Councilmember Chenier. But I do want to be the second to support his motion once it goes up, because to me, this is something that we should do, something we must do, and something that is very important that we do do. So I am very much in support of this effort. And the last thing I'll say is, I heard that we have a six-month with an option to extend, and that's the only thing that I disagree with. My motion would be, and I'll amend the motion if it comes up that way, that we commit to a full year and we extend to years as well. I don't know that there's any art piece that we put up in Sacramento that we put it on a six-month piece with the ability to extend. I don't have that history, but I just don't believe that's something that we would do. And so I don't want to treat this any different than any other art piece that we have put up in the City of Sacramento. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. Again, Madam Clerk, if you can help me with the order, please. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela, Vang, Laloie, Guerra, and then Ashby.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chenier, and Zach, and the members of the community for bringing this really important motion before us. It's not lost on me that this is the month of the trials for the officers who killed George Floyd, it's beginning in Minneapolis. You know, the timing is always right to do what's right, but there's something to me really important about where we stand and making sure that we commemorate the commitment that I know a lot of us made last summer after watching that horrible video of a man gasping for air and asking for his mother and wanting to make it very clear that, yeah, black lives matter. Black trans lives, black women's lives, all black people's lives matter, and I really want to commend the movement. I spent the last two weekends, and it did take me two weekends, because I found myself kind of a wreck after getting through the first part of the Black Lives Matter memoir, "When They Call You a Terrorist." And if you haven't read that book, I strongly, strongly recommend you read that book. It puts the movement in a really important light of the foundation of when it started, and it just, I mean, even now, just talking about it, I'm having trouble, like, saying the words of how impactful I knew this was important. And I think that it's so important for us to reach outside of our own experiences and recognize what's happening to black people in our country and stand in solidarity and support and allyship and co-conspiratorship with them to rectify what's been going on. You know, this movement's been recognized internationally for the Nobel Peace Prize nomination, which is incredible. And I just think that this is the least we can do, and I do hope that this continues when we talk about our budget and the people's budget, when we talk about, you know, the accountability reforms through the police commission process. We're going to start looking back at what happened over the last year and beyond, that we have a real opportunity, and I think this solidifies our commitment as a city and our statement that we all do believe that black lives, all black lives, matter. So thank you again, Councilmember Chenier and everybody, for this item.
Thank you. Who's next?
Councilmember Vang?
Thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Chenier, Zach, and Tanya Faison, and, should I say, Trustee Phillips for presenting tonight and sharing with us why, you know, it is incredibly important. One, not just to have the sign up, but really calling for the city to also reaffirm in terms of not just our performative piece, but making sure we're really truly invested in black lives. And so, you know, I hear that, Tanya and Lavinia, Gracie, you have my full commitment in that. You know, I think it's incredibly important that this council supports this, because, you know, the Black Lives Matter movement is part of the Sacramento history as well, and it's incredibly important that we stand in solidarity and to make sure that, that we support this. So the only question that I did have, because as I was reading articles and in conversation, SPOA defines this, this artwork as political speech rather than government speech. And just wanted to get some insight from legal, because that's the position of the police union, and I wanted to hear from Susanna, really, just from the city end, to make sure that, you know, that's, that's the, that's a conflict or at least what was shared with, that what I've heard, what it was, what was shared with me. I am in full support of this, but just wanted to get clarity maybe from legal on the city end on that piece.
Cheryl?
Sure. Councilmember Vang, Cheryl Patterson is the attorney that worked on this with staff, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to her.
So the sign clearly expresses an opinion. I don't believe it's political speech technically, but it's clearly an opinion. And the city, as a government agency, has a right to express its opinion at the same time not creating what we call a public forum for everybody else to post whatever else they want to post in that same space. And so there is a provision in the Constitution, basically, that allows government agencies to have a government speech and put their opinion out there. And so we can, that's why we're asking the council to approve Zach's sign as the city's government speech, so we can put it up in the park and control anybody else from posting anything else they want to post.
Yeah, because I just want to make sure that, and I think that's really good for clarity, because what I don't want to see happening, right? I want to make sure, I think I'm in full support of this, and I want to make sure we pass this unanimously, but want to make sure I understand the legal piece, just in case, you know, you get other folks that may want to, may, they want to be, may want to have hate speech, and I don't want that in the city, but I fully support this. And thank you, Councilmember Chenier, for, for, for moving this forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next?
Councilmember Laloie?
Thank you very much. I want to thank, obviously, Zach. Thank you so much. What a way to represent District Two. Thank you. I also want to thank Ms. Faison. My apologies if I'm mispronouncing that, and also Ms. Phillips. You know, I, I, as an immigrant, I've been in this country for a little bit over 20 years, and I have never seen this country so divided. I've never seen the state of California so divided, and I've never seen our wonderful city of Sacramento so divided. So it, it's, it's, it really hurts me when us as human beings want to take a position of who's better than the next person, when in reality, we're all 100% equal. So Zach, I love the sign. Great job. But I do have my concerns. Black Lives Matter movement cannot be identified by a wonderful design sign by Zach. The movement, we have to make sure we support the movement with bringing and investing money in communities that are black and brown, more than ever before. Because unless we commit to that and bring more investments to the communities of black and brown and give more opportunities, more job opportunities, then, again, what have we really accomplished with Black Lives Matter? So, again, I want to thank everyone, but our job is just getting started on this movement. We are not even remotely close to where we should be. The movement started some time ago. We're still driving in communities that are heavily black and brown, and we haven't seen any kind of movement in those communities. We haven't seen anything in upgrading infrastructure. We haven't seen upgrading of our schools. We haven't seen upgrading of programs or, or having extra programs for the youth in these communities. So as much as I'm 100% supportive of this sign and a great job, but in a bigger picture, we can relax by saying, well, we have a sign there, mission accomplished. It's a crazy world that we live in, and it really bothers me that, you know, we have people that take the position as identifying who is better than the next person. And we've seen some issues that was in my district last week with one of the schools, which was absolute embarrassment. So this is much bigger than Sacramento or a particular community in Sacramento. And I hope that us as collective members of this, council members of this city, we actually take the time and have discussions about what can we do as a group to make sure these communities are well-funded, to make sure the youth in these communities are well taken care of. So we minimize these issues that we're faced with today. This division that is really destroying the very essence of this country. So, again, I want to thank you, Zach, and everybody that was involved with this project. But my dear colleagues, this is a much bigger picture. This movement hasn't really broken the surface yet, because I, I think that the way the media covered this movement was absolutely despicable. And I think the movement and its true creators and players, the sky is the limit of what we have to do. We have to bring banks into these communities. We have to make sure our school system is much better in these communities. So with that said, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Laloie.
Councilmember Guerra?
Thank you very much. I want to thank also Trustee Phillips and Tanya Faison and then the Oak Park Neighborhood Association, and also our artist, Mr. Zach Trobridge, for, for this effort here. And I, I completely support this, and specifically in a, in a park, because, you know, art is powerful in a, in a way to educate not only just youth but families and encourage that conversation. And having it in a public setting where families are together and can understand that. And, and, and I just recall, you know, being a young kid, looking at, you know, some of the Diego Rivera's and Orozcos and, and seeing how powerful they were, and I think this is an important piece to look at our community and city spaces to be able to be educational places. So, you know, art has that strength of being able to, to convey a different set of information and education in a much different way that I think is so powerful. So I think, I want to, I want to-- So I, I think, I want to, I want to thank also, you know, Tanya for, for thinking through about like where we're going to put this at or why we're going to put this at. Because one of the issues that we began to look at, and I want to give a little credit to Supervisor Phil Serna on the, the, bringing to us the, the deaths in our infant rates and, and addressing the, the how many, how many of our Black youth were dying early on and targeting and making sure that we're focusing resources on that. I think the, the, the thought process that was put in, in the selection, I think, is important there. So one, I want to thank that effort. And yes, I agree with the, that, that we have to go beyond just the six months. We have to go beyond just the art piece, but also those critical investments in our community. So a big thank you and I'm here to support, again, this level of public art in our community.
Thank you very much, Gara.
Thanks, Mayor. So, yeah, I, I'm very supportive. I think this is a great idea. The only kind of concern I have is that, you know, I went to Sac Hi Two and McGeorge, and I think it's brilliant that it starts in Oak Park, but it, there are other parks in the city where I think if we could do a, some type of circulation and maybe visited each district and we each chose a park for a short period of time and then sent it back to McClatchy, it might be really meaningful. I, I think, you know, just making sure that each part of the city knows that each council member agrees that all Black lives matter. And we, we had an interactive, Tanya Faison said, it would be great to have, you know, something more permanent, more interactive. And we had an interactive art piece in a library in my district. It didn't have quite as meaningful of a statement, but it was really popular. And we did rotate it. It went to Smod. It came to me. And ultimately, people liked it so much that we, we built one like it in honor of the librarian who was killed in my district. And I'm just thinking about that art piece and how powerful it is and how interactive it was and how it was mobile and able to go places. So if, if Zach's artwork, it can, is durable enough to make it through a couple of years and go visit each of our districts, I think that would be fantastic. And if we maybe want to do something even more interactive and send it on, on display, I'd be in favor of that as well. Agreed. This is symbolic, but it's a powerful symbol and one that I think we could all really embrace and hopefully, you know, make, make our communities proud. So Councilmember, Vice Mayor Shanier, thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you. I want to make a comment, returner to Councilmember Shanier. You know, this morning, a number of us were with Councilmember Vang decrying the rise in anti-Asian hate crimes, including a, an incident, terrible incident in South Sacramento. And we all sort of said the same thing in different ways, that words matter. Words really matter. What people say matters. And we said that in a negative way. I know I said it in a negative way, referring to our former president and the tone that I think he set in this country. But tonight, I think, represents the opposite, that words can matter in a very positive and powerful way. And this sign is going to make people reflect and to think and to talk and to act, to remedy, to try to remedy great injustices. And I like sort of where Councilmember Ashby was going a moment ago. I hope that this is just the baseline, that we can turn this into some form, and we should provide some resources and funding, to some form of an educational experience around Black history in our community, the history of redlining, the issues with our police. I, I think we could take other steps here that would use this and elevate it for even greater opportunity for education and dialogue. This is a great start, and I think it'll be very, very powerful. And I thank Councilmember Shanier for your leadership. I thank Gracie Phillips and Tanya Faison and Zach Trobridge and everybody. Makes me proud to be a Sacramento today. Thank you. Councilmember Shanier?
Thanks, Mayor. A couple of things I want to reiterate, Zach. You know, this sign just showed up in Critters Park one day. And my wife and I were kind of walking around the park. It's like, oh, what are these people looking at over there? So it's very cool and it was a very sad day when it got vandalized because that's not who we are as a city, I think. But I want to thank you for your work in it and your work in rebuilding it and, and putting it in McClatchy Park. Tanya and Gracie, thank you so much for coming today. Appreciate it. I, I appreciate all the thank yous from my colleagues, but it's, it's totally not about me. This is from the community and about the community. I think my, my colleagues have said a lot of the things that I would say. You know, I, I've worked in, in this position now for ten years. Over that period of time, we've probably invested over a million and a half dollars in McClatchy Park in rebuilding the amusement park and, and putting in the skate park, the tennis courts, rebuilding the basketball court, rebuilding the ball fields. All things that the community absolutely deserves. You know, should be a first-class quality experience when you, when you go visit McClatchy Park because of the history that it has here. For those who don't know, it, it actually was an amusement park at one point called Oak Park. It did have a roller coaster there, among other things. And, and the trolley car came down Fifth Avenue from downtown to get people there and, and one of the first suburbs really that we had here in Sacramento. I, I really hope that, well, what I was going to say, we, we've invested a lot of money into the park, but I think that this sign is as important as any singular thing that we've done. And I hope that it remains as a touch point for us when we think about what we're doing in the communities, what our young people need. Couldn't, couldn't say it better than Ashley said and talking about the program they're doing at Oak Ridge and what they're doing for families and young people. We just need to work harder together to do that. So with that, I, I look forward to it. I, I don't know, we can say a year at this point. I know the structure may or may not handle the winter. We, we can talk about that. We can talk about what it would be to, to move it around the city or do something with it. I'm happy to talk about that with you, Zach. We appreciate your work on it. And we appreciate it again, all the work the city staff has done, Mario and our, our legal people, Cheryl, for making sure that we can do this and do it in the right way so it can be sustained. So with that, I will move the staff recommendation to, to install this with extending the timeline by six months to one year before we make a decision about what to do. And Zach, we can work with my office to make sure that it's stable throughout that period of time. So thank, that's my motion.
Second by Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you.
Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Commissioner?
Hi.
Councilmember Gara?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Hi.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Unanimous. Congratulations and thank you. It's excellent. All right, members, that concludes the formal part of the agenda. Do we have public testimony on items?